Village Board, Black Earth, roll call.
Okay. Here, James Coyle.
Here.
Scott Hatchin.
Here.
Pam Lewis-Rindell.
Here.
Sarah Morrow.
Here.
Tyler Melton.
Here.
And Mitch Hopson.
Here.
And pledge allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, proof of posting, a copy of this notice delivered to the following on June 2nd, emailed to the Star News, Lake Ridge Bank, and Black Earth, posted at the Black Earth Municipal Building, Black Earth Post Office, and the Black Earth webpage. Public comments?
So I'd just like to introduce myself. My name is Brandon Myburger. This is my wife Laura. We're in the process of purchasing the shack in Black Earth, along with Sarah Morrow. And I believe our licensing is on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Welcome. All right, discussion and action approval of the meeting minutes of May 2nd. They were included in your packet.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Pam, second by Mitch. All in favor? Aye. Number six, discussion action on environmental improvements fund. I believe this is going to be your show.
Yes, so for these two ones, there's not too much action. It kind of encumbers number six, seven, and eight. But just for starting with number six, just to inform everyone again, for the environmental improvements fund, that is what I've been talking about from DNR. That's what they call it for the June 30th to middle and for the September 30th to middle that are coming up. So as everyone's, most of you are aware, there's a new face on the board.
Yep.
Just so you're aware, Nick Wuwolff with Town and Country Engineering. But this is for the June 30th to middle that we're getting everything in line for getting the plans together and the proper documentation submitted this June. So I've been working with Senator Mino back and forth and collecting data to get the appropriate documentation audit and so forth. And otherwise, just an update on that agenda item.
Okay. So no action?
For number six, no action.
No action. All right, so now we go into number seven, which is the actual resolution, 2023-03, appointing an authorized representative to file applications for financial assistance from the state of Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund.
Yes, so this is just appointing authorizations to actually submit to the, again, falls on the meet that June 30th and September 30th deadline, where it gives authorization, then the village picks authorizations to submit certain documents that the DNR requires for these application processes. And if award is, award, when they do award and it is favorable, where the village has seen they get enough grant money and want to proceed with it, does follow through, whereas then that same individual will be signing those documents all the way through the loan process, up to the loan process and through the loan process, once the project is complete.
So we need approval on that resolution?
Well, we're doing a circle line for the money, so I make a motion we accept resolution 2023-03.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries. And then we go to the 2023-04 resolution, which is the declaration of the official intent to reimburse expenditures for clean water fund programs and safe drinking water loan program project.
Yep, I cut you off, Laura.
That's okay, no, you go.
So this one's just saying, as you can, as you're well aware, you passed, two months ago, I think you passed it, where you gave out authorizations for the design process and move forward with that, that states that, hey, you'll be accumulating costs, which you already have been, but you have the right to be reimbursed for that cost if you decide to move forward with the DNR's process. If you, again, once the results actually come out for how much forgiveness, they say forgiveness, but grant money that the village will get and the low or subsidized interest loan for that process, that this money you accumulated up to that point for when the closing documents occur, you can be reimbursed for it and to let you know that there will be costs up to that point.
Okay. That's a resolution that requires an approval? I entertain a motion.
I'll move that we go ahead and approve the reimbursement resolution, 2023-04.
I'll second.
Oh, yep.
Discussion.
I feel like I'm in Vegas, but as far as these, as far as these grants attached to or what we're seeking to get reimbursed by or forgiven.
Yep.
We're still saying we'll roll the dice on 3.1 million dollars. And if they don't, if we don't get this money from this, this, that's on the up for, right?
So right now, how it said you only have a contract for designing and submitting the application.
Okay.
So once it goes in, once we submit the June 30th and September 30th for both of those, the DNR comes out with a brand new list and says, all right, for the principal forgiveness, Black Earth got 20%, let's say. And then out of the market rate of a set 6% loan, you get a subsidized 2.5. Don't quote me on those, but I'm just throwing ballpark numbers. And then at that time, if the board wants to proceed forward, then yes, it would look at, village would be required to make those payments, it would proceed to the closing process. But this just sets it up to see where you would come in that pool of money that the DNR has. And if it's not favorable, we would do, at no cost, everything's done, the following year, we would resubmit the application, because that was.
Center Street.
Center Street was exactly that way. It was like three years in a row.
Yep.
And that third year, there was a couple municipalities throughout the state that backed out. And I think Black Earth got 20 or 25% grant at that time with the, and then also subsidized interest, or loan, interest loan.
Okay, well, that answers my question. Thanks.
Yeah.
Answered mine too. I didn't have a question. I was going to say Center Street was part of it.
Yeah.
And we still have a loan outstanding of a clean water, so it'll be coming due, so.
That's typically a 20-year loan.
Yep.
Any other questions? I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Resolution passes. Number nine, a discussion and action review of the 2022 CMAR report and approval of resolution 2023-02, the 2022 annual compliance maintenance for the Wisconsin DNR.
Okay, good one.
4.0. 4.0 green.
Right. So basically, we're doing good. This is just a punch and play thing that DNR had set up. We're sitting with funds, maintenance, planned projects. As far as the planned projects, we've left those blank for now. Haven't set a date on any desire or any moving forward projects to be done. But yeah, our grade is sitting good, so seems kind of backwards to me, but we have to develop the resolution in order to need to send this fortune to the DNR for them to give us the documentation back of things that we could maybe work on improvements, maybe have questions who want to see step on in that. It's just kind of a plurality thing at this time. Once we get the DNR's thumbs up, we'll probably just talk about that at public works, I guess, if there was any questions at that time. We submit June 30th at the deadline. I think they said DNR's got 90 days to get to us.
And Mitch mentioned it, but if we could note publicly that it is a great point average of 4.0.
One of the things Danny and I did kind of encounter was the area of replacement funds, so 3.0, kind of through, basically the 3.0 area all the way to 3.3, just trying to somehow build those funds a little better for replacements or maintenance of like lift stations, some of our products for sewer type replacements and stuff should be coming out of this, so we're just kind of, we're learning as we go, that things were done incorrectly in the past. Because I wasn't really able to do any of these reports before, so we're getting there.
When's the last time you've had a 4.0 on yourself?
I haven't heard of it. But just the financial things, I mean, you know, the major SCADA stuff, electronics stuff, you know, when a warehouse go down and make $30,000, it's not even dropping above $100,000, but unfortunately, comps run down. Yeah, our, as James said, our grades have been good, you know. Before we're done with the report.
Yep. I would look for a motion to approve resolution 2023-02.
To move.
Motion by Hodgson, second by Coyle. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Discussion and action resolutions, 2023-05, approval of the issuance of liquor license for Pound LVS.
So this resolution, after speaking with a lawyer, this is the route that he suggested that the village take, so as Brandon and Laura were saying earlier, there's a sale of the shack bar in town, and just for the continuation of the liquor license to go through, so there's no disruption or any type of, you know, if you want to have that continuity.
I've never seen this, so when I, when I applied for mine, it was attached to the Class B and Class A, there was no resolution when I did mine, just to say that. Two, the dates are wrong. I will not be closing on June 22nd. The last date of business will be the 25th. Licenses will not be relinquished until the closing on June 30th. So if you look on the second one, it says discussion action on liquor license applications and beer for Sharon Enterprises. The reason we're doubling is because we have not officially closed on that business. So if for some reason the sale goes south, I will retain those licenses and go forward as of July 1st. So we're dueling, and as soon as the sale takes place and paperwork signed, then Danny won't have to print my licenses, right? So I just want to make sure that in this resolution, these dates are wrong, my license will be in effect until the sale, it'll be like midnight on June 30th.
Well, so this is a little quick for us, isn't it, right?
So that, the point of this one, so that was the dates that I had when I spoke with our attorney. Those changed, if you guys want that. So he said that for the legal continuity, this is what he suggested.
Which is.
This looks like an extra. Do we have another liquor license available? And they're giving them this one first?
No, so this is because.
We've never done this, have we?
No, it just looks like.
It just seems like a lot of.
This is getting rid of one and then accepting the same license over.
Right.
It's not, there's probably a liquor license available, but it.
I'm wondering if that's what it looks like from this, that there's another one available, they're giving this one.
There is one.
There is one available, but it's not this.
But that's not, yeah.
Yeah.
So I make a motion to not accept this, or not to give this.
You shouldn't, you shouldn't make any more.
I can't, you're right. But these are the wrong.
And neither is you, so, okay.
Right?
Yep, nope, very good.
These dates may be changed.
So I guess question is, do we change the dates? Let's get it on the floor before we. Yeah, okay, I make a motion that we approve resolution 2023-05.
Second.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now we can discuss.
Yeah.
Yeah, or we can always amend it. So, so what's the easiest way to do it?
So you just want to know if the date's changed?
Done.
Or when the sale's final?
It's also got to be in there if the sale falls through, they should retain their license.
Right, because I need to make sure that I'm retaining.
So that's, that's what this would cover. So that's when I, when I explained it to him, that's what it would be covering.
Right.
So if something did happen, that's why next on the line would be 11. Make a motion to approve pending any type of.
And also so that like, we don't issue an open third license.
Yeah.
For a business that then doesn't go into business.
Right.
But you can't, you can't issue.
Well, there's only so many liquor licenses.
Yeah, and, yeah.
You can't issue a license where there's no existence of the building.
Yeah.
So move any type of, you know, lease situation. So this is the cleanest way that he.
So can we just change the date from June 22nd to June 30th? I mean, then there's no overlap, it's June 30th to July 1st.
And it would be relinquished on the same day.
So if it was, so the information when I was speaking with the lawyer is that it would not, the closing wouldn't be on the 30th, so it was prior to the 30th, if the motion, or if the closing is on the 30th, the licenses expire on the 30th, we don't do any of this. That was the information I was going, I had at the time.
So we, the change is taking place on the 30th? So we do need this, or we do not need this?
So if the closing isn't going to be prior to the 30th, then we don't need to go this route.
Okay. And if that closing date's confirmed? It's on the 30th. Okay.
And so if the sale doesn't go through on the 30th, you say the permit expires on the 30th, but it just automatically renews?
Well, there's the application for.
Yeah.
And it will be like, in the event that, right? So in the event that the sale doesn't go through.
Yeah.
That's why I've submitted my information also.
Yeah.
So we have to do something since it's this month period, right? It's the board meeting.
Yeah.
So what, what do we need to change? Dates?
Well, we don't, we don't need to.
You don't need to do this at all?
Do this resolution at all if the closing's going to be on the 30th.
Yeah, if it is for sure the 30th, this is, the information that I have when I spoke with him is that the closing date was not going to be on the last day of the license date.
Yeah.
But if it is, then we don't have to do.
Okay, then it'll just.
Then we just have to not, not vote on, or just say, no, we won't do it, right?
Yeah.
Right. We just have to vote on the. You still got to do the liquor license, you still have to do a new liquor license.
But that'll be, that'll be in 11.
That'll be in number 11.
That's discussion action 11.
All right.
So we have a motion and a second to approve this, but since we, it's not since required.
I'll rescind my motion.
Rescind the motion. No action to be taken.
Second, yeah, I also rescind the second.
We, it'd be, you can just vote on it and let it fail, and then.
Why would you vote on something you don't need?
Yeah.
Right.
I think we just.
The current motion is.
Why rescind that motion? You rescind that motion.
Rescind the motion. Okay, that being said, then we'll move into the liquor license application. And we do these individually.
We need to.
All right, so liquor license applications to be approved for Class B, beer and liquor, all the checks have gone through with, everything is good to go for all of these applications. Payments been received. I'll clear on my end.
I'll make a motion we go ahead and approve Black Earth Lanes LLC's liquor license, number one.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Black Earth Lanes is approved.
I'll also make a motion, number two, that we approve Sharon Enterprise LLC liquor license, which will be relinquished on the 30th if the sale goes through, otherwise she will retain it.
And that.
And that. We have a motion and a second. We need, we need to.
I need to abstain.
Yeah.
And so, well.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained. And number three for Pound, Pound LLC.
I'll make a motion we go ahead and approve Pound LLC pending the approval or the signing of the shack.
I'll second.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Aye. Motion carries. All right. Then we go to Class A Beer, Class A Liquor. We have Quick Trips and the Black Earth BP.
Can we do this together?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve Quick Trip and Black Earth for Class A Beer and Class A Liquor.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Or actually, I should have said, any discussion or questions?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Silly girl.
I'm sorry. Rob's rules. Any discussion? Nope. All in favor? Aye. All right, motion carries. Discussion, action, cigarette tobacco license application again for Quick Trip and Black Earth BP.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion, action, license application.
Right, so all of these, the long list, there's two with asterisks next to them. I was working with Quick Trip, that they were having their people go through training. Those two are missing. I did not receive the full application from those two, so those should not be approved. Everyone else has been vetted and is able to be approved.
Well, we can approve them pending.
Yeah.
Pending, you need to.
Pending.
You can't stop.
Not what you could.
That way they don't have to.
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, where are the stars?
To approve.
On the agenda, under 13A, you'll see a two asterisk.
Okay, I see.
Those are the ones that are pending.
The operators' license pending the two asterisks.
So that was, that was a motion?
No.
Do I have a second?
I'm abstaining from this, so.
Yeah, because I'm on there too, so I should also.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Aye. Carries. All right. Number 14. Discussion, action of the 2021 Geo Note borrowings for the Village Hall Automatic Door Upgrade.
Outside from the quote, for having our front door have a handicap button to have both doors open, about $6,800 for the, if you're looking at the building, it'd be the left door. It asked about how much it would be to have both doors have buttons, but he said based on how the handicap ramp's coming up, it would open right into it, so he just said that, you know, it makes sense to have that. So it'd be one button on the outside would open the inside and the outside door at the same time coming in, and then there could be button on the inside, obviously, to exit. That would be something that we should either budget for or use this money for, just because it's going to be more accessible than it is.
That cover all of the electrical and everything required to run through the door and everything?
So that was, they haven't come out here to look at everything.
That's just their general.
Yeah. So.
So we go after bids on it, or is, would you like to be able to go after bids on it?
I think it's worthwhile to have a building more accessible.
Well, I just.
So you might, you might do that.
Yeah, I think it would be good to.
Yeah, I think anything, is it anything over $5,000 needs to.
Uh, it depends what it is, too.
And it was just the one I would, I would like to, others also.
Yeah.
But with this quote, it wouldn't be replacing the doors, which would be hugely expensive. It's just an attachment to the door, so.
So are you looking for a motion to just proceed with the quote process?
Or discussion.
And then pay in bids?
Yeah, if you, you can just, if it's not.
Or do you want to just go with this one that's just going to attach to the door?
I could see the other option. I'd be comfortable looking for other, just.
I agree, it's a good thing, and I, yeah. So can we?
Should have happened when it was built.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't believe it.
I don't.
It was.
Depends on the code of the day.
It was prior to when?
ADA, ADA happened after the building was.
There was ADA, just not to the stringent as it is now.
There had to be.
Otherwise, it wouldn't be a ramp.
It was between 90.
Yeah, it was 90.
Okay, so I entertain a motion.
For what?
I don't think we need a motion.
Yeah, just, yeah, throw it.
Okay, right?
Yeah.
Go after.
Yeah, let them project and.
All right. Everybody good with that? Good? Discussion and action invoices to be paid.
Missed one.
Missed one? Oh, sorry. Oh, Tyler, I missed you. I'm so sorry. Discussion, action, Black Earth Creek Monitoring Devices. I believe that you should have all received Tyler's handy.
Yeah.
Go for it.
So I learned about, a little bit about the monitoring that goes on in Black Earth Creek in the upper upstream part of the creek, near Cross Plains. So there are three stations that are currently, and I'm still learning about it, so I apologize if I get some stuff wrong. But there are three stations currently monitored, managed by USGS. They have been funded for the last five years, I believe primarily by the Village of Cross Plains, as an act of good faith. They didn't really have to approve that as part of, because of the way that their permit is written for the wastewater treatment plant, they did some sort of phosphorus trading land use. Instead of upgrading equipment, they applied, they did some land use changes that offset otherwise pollutants from a waste, a standard wastewater treatment, treatment plant operation. So that's all in their permit, but they said, you know what, we still think it's worthwhile to monitor for five years. But it's coming up on that five years in August, I believe, or September? I can't remember exactly. And so far, there's not really a plan to fund the continuation of the monitoring. And this is some of the data that, that is gained from those monitoring stations. So what you're looking at is dissolved oxygen in milligrams per liter over, versus time. This is critical because it helps decision makers, DNR, Village of Black Earth, know what the health of the stream is that's running through our town. It's a Class 1 trout stream, which brings visitors in from outside of town, and also our local residents like to fish it too sometimes. So just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, that the funding of this data is questionable, whether or not it's going to continue in jeopardy.
And this is something that, the things Cross Plains didn't add into their budget, is that right?
Yeah, so my understanding is it's not in their budget moving forward, doesn't have to be, per their permits, and they've done five years of voluntary work so far. So key takeaways are, you know, the health of the upper part of the river, the headwaters, the feed is generally, the watershed is the more critical, right? Like your sources, the bulk of the flow. Two, you know, this data will allow DNR or other regulators to take action if they see something in this data. You know, there are action points on here, generally, I think below six, I think is, by that line is there. So if that drops below six for a sustained amount of time, somebody can come out and say, hey, what's going on? And they can come out and say, oh, so and so spread too much manure, or so and so's discharging too much, or this construction development is adding too much, you know, heat to the stream or something like that. So that allows people to make informed decisions about how to develop the watershed.
So you're saying there should be monitors, there'll be little bells go off somewhere, and somebody would, it'd be automatically, if the ice cream rate stayed way low for 20 days.
Yeah, so.
From a computer somewhere, it would get a ding?
I, I think, I think there are people who have that job, they have the job of monitoring these sorts of data sets, and when they go off, they're supposed to come out and take a look at it. So without this data, the only time in action would really be taken, my understanding, is if a fisherman goes out and tries to fish the stream and notices a big fish kill. And at that point, it's too late. Which apparently that happened back in 2001.
Yeah.
So that might jog, doesn't jog my memory.[1794.94] I moved here in twenty sixteen, but.
Do you know what the cost was?
So, so far, the, the cost is apparently, like, I think it, they said sixty thousand dollars per year for all three stations for.
How much?
What, sixty thousand dollars. I'm not saying that.
For all three stations, though?
For all three stations annually.
Okay.
Nick, there's, Google, no, you're Google. A guy, Nick, at the USGS, I can't remember his last name, um, is working on figuring out how to potentially bring those costs down and still get reasonable, meaningful data. And I'm not suggesting that Black Earth take on all of it. Um, I think that we should look at creating a partnership with all invested partners. Everybody who benefits from Black Earth Creek.
All the way down, you know?
Cross Plains, Black Earth, Mazo, all the way down, Vermont, like.
My problem with that is, if we were going to invest in a monitoring station, I'd want it closer to Black Earth.
Right.
Because there's a lot that can happen between these and Black Earth.
I agree.
If we're going to protect the stream in our area, right?
So, with that, the, the area up in Cross Plains that this monitors is the prime breeding ground for the trout. So, that's why it's critical to have the monitoring up there. Because that's where most of the breeding, apparently, most of the breeding happens in that stretch. And that stocks the whole stream, or majority of the stream, that keeps the class one. Probably, you know, if you have to stock the stream, you lose that class one title.
Yeah, so basically, it's a.
And apparently, there's some in Vermont, the Vermont tributary as well, some breeding there. But the prime, the main stretch of breeding happens, or whatever it's called.
From where to where?
Um.
But that's why they did South Valley Road, close off and stuff, which this is all way before that area.
When I, I walked the section, um, like, behind the main, um, commercial stretch in Cross Plains, apparently, that area is ideal for, ideal for reproduction or. Andy, you can, you know, you know the stream better. I don't know if, if, if I can let Andy.
Sure, I can help, uh, help, I hope. Uh, um, the main spawning happens in the vicinity of Cross Plains, not, not, uh, right at the village limit, but that's because most of the groundwater that comes in there, if you see all the water cress, uh, is found elsewhere. But anyway, that's where the water, the water cress comes up through the, actually, into the stream bottom. But there is other spawning, other places, like you mentioned, Vermont Creek, Upper Garfoot. Uh, so, uh, there are surveys done, uh, of that, so, um, that's where most of the spawning takes place. Probably sixty to seventy percent.
The other, the other thing, too, with having one closer is then you would have to build it, construct it. That's going to be more cost. These are already installed and, and in place.
Who wanted the installation of these monitors to begin with?
Um, that's a good question. I think it was a collaboration between the USGS and Cross Plains. I could be wrong.
Yeah.
Maybe, Andy, you know.
If I can help, the, the monitors have been in those stations off and on, uh, since probably nineteen ninety-five. Uh, they, they like to keep them, well, they're kept in the same location because then they have a record of the monitoring at that point. And what Tyler said is correct. If you, you have to, it costs more to move the station. Um, but actually, that's a good question about other monitoring, uh, other places. But those monitor, those monitors are there, and they already have the equipment. They have a satellite link, uh, so, um, that's, that's important. I, I think one of the big things here is just to, uh, like Tyler mentioned, look at a shared way to support these monitors, so that no one entity would have to give more, uh, and it could be, uh, hopefully relatively low cost, involving, uh, villages, towns, and possibly even the county.
There's also a potential, um, potential grant for monitoring that could be applied for. It's just with short, two-month notice, or whatever, before they run out in the fall, right, Andy?
It's the fall of, uh, end of Sep- eh, end of September. And the, the cost sharing.
Fall application and, and February dispersment, I think, right?
Right. For the grants.
What's that?
Is this something we could use for your Black Earth?
Yeah.
Sure. Not in two months, so, well, maybe, you don't know.
You don't know. Somebody's going to have to coordinate if it's going to be a shared effort. There's going to have to be a spearhead, and somebody's going to have to go out and do some glad hand and convince them.
Well, I still, you know, I, they're there. It's a major spawning area, which is good. It's good to monitor something like that, but it doesn't, it doesn't indicate a fish kill farther downstream where a lot of the stream is. So, I'm not so sure it solves everything, right? So. An early warning for us. Right. Well, only, only if it happens in Cross Plains.
Right.
If anything happens past Cross Plains, it doesn't show anything.
So. The other, the other thing, too, on here that, um, is important with these three in particular is the Brewery Creek, uh, monitoring station with the development that's going up that valley. Um, that's a big contributor of, that creek is the, one of the main contributors of phosphorus, right, Andy?
As far as I understand from the, the, the data, it's not the only contributor, but is one of the largest contributors.
So, that's a big point to keep an eye on, too. Not that, I don't know what we could do as a village with regards to any issues, development up there, but it's, without that data, you won't know.
And what does this funding give us that we don't get today from the monitors that are currently in place?
The monitors are not going to be funded.
Yeah. Oh, if they're discontinued, you got it, okay.
So, if, if, if they're dis- so, so if they're discontinued, then, you know, well, if, if there is a fish kill, then it's just kind of like, hey, something happened. And you may or may not be able to.
But them are only, they're, that only monitors a fish kill in Cross Plains. It doesn't monitor the rest of Black Earth Creek. That's the problem with, with that theory, right? So.
Can I ask what the DNR's stance is on this? I mean, they're, uh, they're usually very involved when it comes to Black Earth Creek and Black Earth Park, any reaction. So, what are they saying?
Andy might, sorry to keep humping to Andy, but Andy was, uh, with the DNR for a while and might be able to close the system a little bit.
I was with, uh, full disclosure, I'm, I'm retired. I, I spend a lot of time on Black, in, in Black Earth, the city of Black Earth and the creek. Uh, and, and I talked to Dave Rowley, the fish supervisor, yesterday, and he fully supports this. And like Tyler mentioned, um, that is a critical part of the stream in terms of, for the health of the creek. Also, the, the, uh, uh, what you, what you know about those upper tribes really impact the rest of the, the creek. Uh, the question of the fish kill, the, the two thousand and one fish kill just wiped out the whole stream, and that did originate in the upper watershed. There can be some fish kills, there could be a fish kill like, say, Vermont Creek or Garfoot, uh, that could happen, but it's, uh, usually when a fish kill happens, it's, it's pretty extensive, uh, when it gets into the whole creek. Um, I also would say, there is going to be a meeting called the Steering Committee, uh, which before, I think your clerk, former clerk was on that committee, the Green Infrastructure Committee, and I think Tyler is attending. Uh, this shared, uh, uh, approach will be worked out and discussed further. So, I, I think at least, if I could offer this opinion, I don't think the ask is, there's not, Black Earth, the village of Black Earth isn't asking, asked to put anything on the table tonight. Correct me if I'm wrong, Tyler, but more or less, just can we take this approach and look into it further with more detail and answer your questions? Would that be correct, Tyler? I don't want to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not here asking for a decision on any funds tonight, that's for sure.
But you were going to sit on the Green Infrastructure Committee?
Yeah.
You're going to, okay, you'll participate in that committee and bring more back.
Yep. And then, um, there was one other point.
Basically, the committee that's looking for the cash to keep these going.
Yeah.
Are there representatives from that community, from this round here, or on that?
From other, uh, from, no, so far, like, I, uh, there's.
Peter from, um, it's all of the, the clerk room.
Is Peter on?
In the look to this one from May, let us, Cross Plains is involved, as is Mazo. There's no representation from Black Earth, but it's also at ten o'clock on a Thursday, Teddy, on a Thursday.
I had a different meeting going on that day, so I just.
Well, you can't be in F all those meetings either, you know, so.
I can be on that one.
Could I, could I make a comment, Tyler? This is Peter Antony. That, that meeting, that meeting is available as a Zoom. About half of the attendees are by Zoom versus in person. Andy, Andy and I have basically been in person, but a lot, some of the folks do attend by Zoom, and I think it's important that either Tyler attend by Zoom or Danny attend by Zoom, or come in person if you can. The, the one thing, and I know, uh, Mitch, I'm going to come back to your point about monitoring, let's say, because there is a flow monitor right by the end of Call Road, where it intersects with Highway fourteen or Park Street. That's been there all those years as well. That's just telling us how much water is going by, not, not any of this dissolved oxygen or phosphorus or any other chemical or nutrient monitoring. But I think one thing that, that the committee's going to look at is, is first of all, a way to fund those monitoring stations by Cross Plains and be able to collect the kind of data that, that we want to be able to maintain the class one stream status, which is all the way to the Highway fourteen bridge by, by Mazo Mania. Uh, some of you, some of you are aware that the DNR had a meeting, oh, about three weeks ago out at the high school, where they talked about the plans that they have for Black Earth Creek out by Walking Iron Park, where they're going to do some, uh, remandering of the stream and some other stream improvements. What baffles me is that that section from Mazo Mania all the way down to, I'll say, to Arena is not classified as any kind of trout stream. So, first of all, we don't want to lose the class one trout status between Cross Plains and Mazo Mania. But I think we also want to put some pressure on the DNR to classify that, so, at least some of the creek from Mazo Mania down to Port Arena as class two. There are a lot of trout in there, and this is really kind of an economic development question, uh, to get folks out here to fish. Uh, we, we know that they come out to fish by Cross Plains and through Black Earth. So, I think it's important that the monitoring continues so that we can continue to prove that we've got a class one trout stream and a, perhaps a class two trout stream downstream from there, so that we can, uh, communicate that and advertise that.
Peter, I, I don't, this is Mitch, I don't disagree with you at all, but my point is, if, if, if we're going to do monitoring, and I'm not saying it's valuable or it's that, but there, I think, not too many years ago, there was a fish kill out on KP, out here in Black Earth. Those monitors would never pick it up. My, my point is, should we also be looking at monitoring other areas?
Oh, I, I have like seventeen points, like.
I mean, would you be monitoring a couple of those areas and not all three, and then make one down? I mean.
Yeah.
I, I don't want us to put all our money into three that may not have as much value. They got a lot of value to us, but how much total value, so.
I mean, that was when I, so, I was looking at it, and the one right on Call Road that he mentioned, it was like, well, how much would it be to? That was the thought I had.
That's kind of what I was looking at, too, right?
Add some stuff there, too, like, you know.
So, I think coming out of this, we're all in agreement that, yes, it is important.
Yeah.
We're all in it, especially with new development coming in and, you know, affecting the stream, and we do want to use it as the economic development, you know, to bring people to, to the village. But I agree with Mitch that, you know, we do need more monitors, and we need it more around Black Earth also. So, I think.
Keep that in mind as well.
It sounds like we're all kind of in agreement that you're going to go and represent, right? And say, yes, Black Earth is where.
Sorry.
We are in, but we want to know whose cost sharing, we want to know how much it is, we want to know, DNR, how much are you putting in?
How much is DNR putting in? How much would county be, how, how much would all of the people who are invested in this be looking?
And generally speaking, you know, who's going to pay?
And how does that grant?
And.
Yes. What is our grant opportunity?
And how quickly can we, since it's going to happen?
One other thing that I forgot, we focused only on the fishing aspect of it. The other thing, too, that this would help with, eh, I think, surface water hydrologists maybe would know more than me, Mr. Groundwater, um, the, the flow, the flow data would help with designing any future potential flood mitigation plans that we have.
Right.
Knowing, you know, how rainfall in our watershed affects the flow, because that's changed. I think we all noticed that that's changed in the last five years.
Yeah.
So, having more data like that in five, ten, twenty-five years down the line, that'll help. It's not going to develop a flash flood alert, hey, okay, well, let's get to the doors eight minutes faster. That's not really feasible, but we can at least use the data in engineering designs if we ever do that in the future, so.
Right.
So, I guess your question is, why?
So, my question is, we're interested as a board in this. We view it as important, uh, we don't, I assume, feel like we should bear the whole brunt of it all, and we want to know who's interested and will contribute, depending on what the amount is.
Right.
In general.
Yep, right.
Partners.
Partners, partners.
Yeah.
And interested to know, like, further monitoring.
Further monitoring here and there.
And I really think that should go on our, on grant writing.
Verbucker, agree. On that.
Yeah.
And I think you should bring it to Economic Development meeting also, to see if they can help to focus around, right? When that qualifies.
I think it qualifies for EDC monitoring, so.
I want to thank everyone for, uh, letting me speak, and I appreciate your points. I think they're really great points.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, moving on, invoices to be paid, number sixteen.
I make a motion to approve the invoices to be paid. As for them.
I second. Any questions or discussions? Everybody good? Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? carries.
Okay.
Yep.
Didn't see that? Pretty good. Yeah.
Can we have it in ready?
Mark that down on the minutes.
Well, on that note, I think we all go home. All right, report Vanguard Commission, Mr. Captain.
Interesting. Yes, we met on May seventeenth, and we organized the, uh, our vice president decided that she would throw them out. There has to be a board member, uh, serve as either president or vice president or chair as such. So, she made the motion, and I became the vice president of Vanguard, which is.
Okay, full disclosure, it was my, I was ten minutes into my first meeting. I'm like, look, give me a year, and then I'll take it back. And Scott graciously agreed.
It's fine.
After it threw him under the bus and drove over.
It's been working out really well. Valerie's a, a big help, and, uh, you know, we've got signature cards and everything, is, everything's going appropriately, so.
Thank you, Scott.
So, that, that minute, uh, the minutes of that meeting, I'm going to get with, uh, Valerie and get a little bit better connected with her, and that's because I, I did not get those from our meeting, but. So, I'll get better arranged with that, and I'll have a better report next time around.
Thanks, Scott. Electrical Superintendent, John.
Yep, hello, everyone. Um, just like to add, we did have a bad underground primary wire here a few weeks ago on Reeve Road. Uh, we had to replace about two hundred and fifty feet of that wire. Um, that wire was installed in the seventies, so we had a pretty good useful life out of that wire. Um, unfortunately, just over time, they degrade, and we have to replace it. Um, so.
Did you, did you have that same, wasn't there another similar two hundred and fifty foot last time? Last meeting, or is it the same one?
Uh, in pu- in public works, I told you guys about that, yep. Trust me, I, I feel like I'm on my way, so if I repeat something, yep.
Sorry.
Sorry, Sean.
Sorry, sorry.
No worries, no, I, trust me, when I write these, I actually worry, I'm like, God, did I say it on the last one or not, so. Um, anyways, yeah, so we are still working with the PSC on, um, our CA application for that new transformer, they came back, uh, with a couple more questions, so hopefully we're gonna be done with that here shortly. Um, working with our engineers on placement of that transformer when we get it, um. Uh, the transformer is still scheduled for July, um, here in the next few weeks, we're gonna be pouring a concrete pad to put that transformer on, being about eighty thousand pounds, can't just set it on timber, so that's partially why we are working with the engineers on placement as well. Um, we're continuing to install new services, having quite a few of them here lately, and knock on wood, other than the Reeve Road outage, we've had very few outages here lately, so hopefully that stays the same for a while. Um, next meeting will be July twenty-sixth. And that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Sean.
What you got?
Uh, Black Earth Fire, Black Earth Fire District, that is me, we met on May fourth. Um, great, uh, news, the breakfast served six hundred people, uh, it was a fifteen thousand dollar fundraiser after expenses. Awesome, they did a great job. The Swiftwater Grant has been, uh, received, the gear has been purchased, trainings are being, are they training?
They're, they're training now.
Yep, they're training now, so, um.
Who made the bells?
Very weird.
They were on the news.
Very weird.
So if I understand, we're the holder of the grant and there's this area.
It's a regional grant, we applied and, yeah.
Um, so breakfast vehicles are doing good, brush season continues, um, they had a fire last night, there was a huge fire that night, actually by Cobb, there were ten units involved in that one, was a brush fire. Otherwise, everything's going well, and our next meeting is July thirteenth. Our treasurer, finance.
Okay. So, um, it's kind of an update, you know what Jamie said last time, just kind of what we're working on, so wrapping up, um, from May to June. Uh, we finished our software training, it was very long, very helpful, thousand percent worth it, been working with a lot of systems of upgrading our checklist, making sure our stuff is updated. It's gonna be much better, so that is, thank you for approving that, it was so, super helpful, a very tiny, um.
And you even trained the trainer on one topic, right?
I did, tops, the trainer of you.
Then it's a good train.
Um, worked on the recycling grant, we have Public Works, so thanks for help with that, Public Works, um, we've received the grant check back, uh, it's about forty-eight hundred dollars for the recycling grant. Um, we had border review, my first border review, and then we had to have a second border review, so that was my first time having a second border review, so that was good. Um, hopefully we will not have the omitted, um, omitted properties, whole snafu like last year, so it'll be a lot smoother. Um, the plan commission will be coming up in June, uh, be the nineteenth.
The plan commission is in June?
Yes, June nineteenth.
What time?
Uh, sixth. So Martin will be coming on that, the, um, the notice was sent out to the paper for publication for the middle of two weeks, um, and then the, um, meeting invite was sent out to the members with the, the notice in there too. Um, Matt already talked about the CMAR report, um, we were looking at financials and stuff with that. Bailey will talk more about that, but she invited me for the library board planning committee, um, for that process going through. Constructions were wrapped up in May, all that was submitted, um, all the reconciliation came outside. I met with the PSC to try to wrap up the billing audit from like two years ago that was never finished, um, so working on that, some more stuff to do. Uh, there's been a lot of house sales and transfers coming through the village with, um, move-ins, move-outs, and then just sales, um, so we get special assessment letters in the office or to disclose all the stuff from the village, so I'm busy with that. Um, also really busy with the rental water meters, um, so a new process that was implemented, um, in the first of the year from Public Works last year was, um, to minimize the sewer exceptions that we were getting, uh, so people would just write down their meter numbers and then and for, um, uh, credit for their sewer, um, so we moved into, uh, where they will rent a water meter, which will track specifically the water that is used in that, so people were watering their yards and also doing laundry and washing their toilet and taking showers, so that would all be, um, separated, so it's a lot cleaner for the PSC reports that we have to, um, submit and also just better accounting.
And doing laundry and showering.
Yeah, how was that?
No, it's still separated, it's not even a meter and for sewer one.
Yeah, that's separate, yeah.
So they were doing all that while they were, while they were still writing it down.
So they're not doing.
Yeah, yeah.
To be accepted.
Okay, I see, yeah.
They're actually doing the laundry while they're.
Yeah. Like outside in a tub with a scrub.
You know it.
Scott, maybe you remember that.
Oh, wow. Full burn, right?
Sorry.
You need to be quiet.
How, how, how is it, Danny, is it, is it easier? Is, is the new map, is it easier?
Yeah. It's, it'll be better, for sure, it's a lot, it'll be a lot less work since we don't have to do so much manual stuff. Uh, Matt's been super helpful getting stuff delivered and, um, creating the form for us to, to do it, so that was really helpful. Um, been working with Veer Becker for the Black Earth Creek Park, um, so we got some renderings for the new park up there, so it'll be on Parks Committee. Then tomorrow, Matt and I are going to a finance seminar in Mawston, um, we have like a hundred and twenty page booklet that we'll be going through and all day, so it'll be good, we'll be covering, um, proper accounting, um, capitalizing things, um, helping for stuff, um, and also it'll have a huge section on budgeting, so that will be really helpful for coming up this summer, which is starting soon. Some new solar, oh, Sean's right on, some new solar switching, or some new utility customers are switching to solar panels, so it's coming up, um, a lot more common, we're getting a lot more of those.
I need to excuse myself to go deal with the kid diabetes thing, I'll be back if it's still over.
Um, and then, uh, we had police, Public Works, and two border review meetings in the last month, so it's been. Then with, um, the, there, we'll talk about that, and then July will be my third year of the UW Green Bay Clerks Academy, um, the third and final year of that, so that will be, um, July, my June calendar, um, it'll be the third week of July, it'll be the seventeenth through the twenty-third. I will be, uh, it's virtual, so I won't be physically gone, but it's, their classes are like eight to six every day, um, so it'll be a busy week. Um, and then for financials, I'm headed over there, um, just finished up with audits, um, all of their stuff, they sent over, um, all the journal entries I have to do to correct, so if you see on the first page of the financial reports, um, where our pro- our property taxes and everything, so we're only at four point seven percent to revenues of where it should be, and we're happy through the year almost, so it's just because it hasn't been accounted for in the system. It's there, the money's there, it's just not.
How many entries were there, Danny? How many general entries, general journal entries were there, do you know?
Um, I'll have to look for that, that'll be next month, we'll be, you'll get all the reports and all that stuff for next month. Have to go through. Um, but there's a lot to, you know, and move around and all that kind of stuff, so, work in progress, also, I learned how to do that with our training, so that was very good stuff. So, um, see for July, we'll have a much clearer picture on everything, one being happy through the year, since we'll have, um, up to June or in July's meeting, and then, um, all those journal, uh, journal entries will be made, so you'll be able to see the full numbers.
Thank you.
Uh, question.
Yeah.
Um, what about the module that allows us to go in and view and look at and?
Yes, so that, um, the timing and everything, they're scheduled through end of June.
Okay.
Um, and then just, oh, yeah.
It's an update on one, yeah, yeah.
Um, but I have to coordinate with that, with them, it's just been a lot of stuff and all.
All right, Dean Iowa, wastewater commission.
We met on May eighteenth, um, group bills, over discharge violations, we also had a perfect score on the maintenance annual report.
Wonderful.
Wow.
Uh, otherwise, the meeting went well, um, we do have our superintendent is on paid leave right now, pending attorney guidance. That's it.
Thank you. Economic Development.
We're working on that, it's a work in progress, we haven't made it.
We haven't, okay. Uh, EMS, Benny?
Um, yeah, that's me, and, yeah. I, if, if there was one in May, I did not attend, I'm working hard to find you, so, I will go, and I'll get better at record, uh, doing tweeting minutes too, huh?
It's only, it's every other month. It is every other month.
So maybe there wasn't one in May, now I can.
It might not have been one in May, it might.
No, you never.
Uh, I, I emailed Rachel's.
Yeah, okay. So, there you go, okay, if there was one, I'd go.
I know there was a library board meeting, Sarah.
Yes, we met on, on May sixteenth, um, Bailey had her space needs assessment kickoff meeting on the fifteenth, um, Danny mentioned the group sessions for that will kick off on, uh, June twenty-eighth, but I'll let Bailey kind of take the drift.
Um, so, yeah, we last met on May sixteenth, um, we had our core planning committee, um, that was led by S H, the architecture firm that we fly. Um, and that was just a group of seven folks, um, who, um, were tasked with identifying goals for this project, um, as well as identifying folks to be on the public advisory task force, um, so recruitment for that has started, um, and meetings for that start on June twenty. Other important updates, um, I did a, the same space needs presentation at the library board meeting that I did, um, um, when we first got the space needs assessment back, um, just to get everyone kind of up to speed with where we're at and where we're hoping to go. Um, okay, we're called from, um, the last meeting, we had a planned network outage for the weekend of Memorial Day, um, that got postponed, unfortunately. Um, our library system is moving buildings, um, and they need to move all of their server equipment, um, which means that we won't have internet for the time that they are moving it. Um, they didn't get, um, the necessary permits in time from the city of Madison, um, it was just kind of a sea of errors, I guess. Um, and so they had, ended up having to postpone that outage. Um, so that got postponed to, um, starting at three PM on June twenty-eighth, um, to July first, so we are planning to be closed for that time, part of that time is the weekend. Um, and then, um, since we won't have internet or wifi, most of our services will not be able to be completed. Um, we'll still be emptying book drops, you know, we'll be doing programs as usual, um, nothing will be due, no holes will expire, we've done all we can to kind of make it as seamless for people as possible. Um, and I'm also planning to do a pop-up library sometime in that time, weather dependent, um, because it seems like every time I plan to do one, the weather's bad, so. Um, I will, um, plan to do that, uh, but the date is to be determined. Our summer library program kickoff is tomorrow at two PM, it's gonna be really exciting in the parking lot, we'll have, um, have the fire truck come, uh, for a visit for the kids to take a look at, um, but we'll also have games and giveaways and lots of fun stuff for the kids to do. Um, we have an adult craft night next week on the eighth, and we're doing a personal care drive benefiting Heights Unlimited Community Resource Center, um, for the entirety of our summer library program, so that is June first to August fifth. I, I've also started the planning for the park passport program, which, um, in previous years started in, um, mid-August and then goes until mid-October, just to encourage people to get out into their county parks and people can get privacy for it, um, it's a really exciting program, so, um, it's a lot of fun. And our next meeting is June twenty-first.
All right, uh, Public Works, Mr. Petchen.
Public Works met on May twenty-fourth, um, listen to, uh, Sean give up the underground, uh, the two hundred and fifty feet of cable, that's probably where. Working with Forrester, this is all stuff you've already heard, I'm trying to, to stop. Uh, we discussed with Town and Country the next steps visiting each well and reservoir to do visual inspections and three D scanning, and we also dealt with road capital improvement, and the surveyor has been in the village to make the maps for the plan, Web Street, Ray Street, East Street, and Hillside. We've already done the resolution, so thank you very much. We're trying to purchase, oh, what would you say, a piece of land from the co-op to help with, uh, uh, development, um, we're not, we're at kind of an impasse because they wanna sell the whole, wanna sell the whole thing, if they're gonna sell this, they're not gonna sell us a little strip, they the whole, to their deal, so that's, and I, I.
About the whole thing for the little strip, correct?
Yeah, they, they're saying a little strip for the whole thing, they're asking.
A little version of it. Matt?
I'm gonna let you take over from that point.
Yep, um, so last stuff was covered, Danny and Scott, um, we have started on our yearly samples, uh, inorganic, synthetic organics, volatile organics. PFOS started this quarter, so that'll be a quarterly thing going forward, um, and leaded copper samples, which we have ten of them, that go out to certain houses that were built in certain eras in the community. Home owner takes those samples first thing, first drop morning, so those should go up in the central lab tomorrow. Uh, we did some sewer jetting, uh, with both machines still, um, everything was going good there, stormwater ditching with the dry weather, we kind of took advantage of being able to get into some spots that typically are very soft and wet. Uh, locate with both of the ongoing stuff for street projects, Gatorade, Danny said there's a lot of finals with move-ins, move-outs, a couple meters that have stopped this last month, uh, so working on those exchanges. One more was serviced, our whoop, whoop. Uh, roof, well, well, is, uh, new shingles are on, the roper said we were at least five years behind getting them done because they were a pain in the butt to pull off, down the hill, down to the, it was bad. Um, but there was no damage to any of the plywood roof structure, thankfully, um, so wasn't anything there. Uh, we do have new roof fans coming for those, so they basically just exhaust fans for the chemical room and the pump room as well, and do have some lighting that will be going up there just to have security lighting and visual, um, Bobcat came in, which is typically a yearly exchange, it was eighteen months this time, they gave you a price, wasn't happy with the price, a couple days later, also the price was half five hundred bucks, seemed like it was worth it, so did that. Going to stuff with Town and Country, Veer Becker, C M R reports, Public Works meeting did get rescheduled, or will have to be rescheduled because, uh, the plan commission meeting through the nineteenth is gonna take precedence over that, so Danny's kind of, I surveyed for that. One question I do have for Danny is the invoices, do you, do you need?
Um.
I know you were gonna.
I'm waiting for them to get back, yeah. I'm waiting for them to get back, yeah. I'm waiting for them to get back.
That's all I got.
But June nineteenth just canceled, is that what you're telling me?
Or Public Works.
Public Works, we got to send the, uh, the planning commission.
Uh, that's all I got.
Parks Committee.
No parks yet, right?
Yeah, no parks yet. Uh, Police Committee. Uh, we met on May thirty-first. I accepted, um, an appointment to chair. Uh, we voted on adding overtime to Field Day Saturday for a second officer to be, um, I think we approved eleven to eleven and noon to midnight. Um, so we extended Calvin's hours and then approved for a second officer to be on for the duration of, uh, Saturday.
I did talk with Hartman too, and he said that he'd be interested in doing that.
Okay, good, great, good. Um, we approved the, um, the cellphone upgrade, um, and then we added for a future agenda, um, discussing a camera, adding a camera outside of the bathrooms at the, the park due to the vandalism that's going on, um, but we, more to come on that. We did set a future meeting, but my understanding is that will also need to be rescheduled. Is that still true? July seventeenth, I think was, was set, but we'll need to move that, um, but we will meet again ahead of Field Day.
Um, we did talk about, sorry, uh, we did talk about, uh, like trail cams. And, I mean, Public Works could even probably do that, not even police, right?
Yeah, I guess it depends on elaborate.
Why are we wasting time with trail cams?
No, we're just talking, we're just looking into that.
To put in...
To see who's going at what time to vandalize.
I know.
But, and, and then, uh...
So cheap to get cameras set up and make...
And the other thing I'd say is, is, um, Calvin is flexing shift, so he is here till like one AM some nights and things like that too, so.
Questions for anybody? Any other business that may be brought before the board for future agendas?
Think we should probably have a little session on our next board meeting on some of the GoFundMe money. And if we can get some bids in for like generator, trailers and things, it'd be nice to start getting that ordered.
Um, so Veerbecker's kind of looking into emergency management, being that we have a police here. This is emergency management quarters. Trying to see if there's any type of funding to at least get a agenda here based off of that.
Oh, yeah, sure.
And other locations might be funded solely out of old pockets.
We got prices for the trailer yet?
Nothing updated, right? You know, Sean's kind of been busy with his new staff and stuff like that. I don't know if I have something, I'm going to have an emergency management meeting for, or just go ahead and get Public Works.
Yes, President.
I guess you're not anymore, sorry.
Well, I'm on emergency management required, not through the board, so, so I guess.
Yeah. Any interest in emergency management meeting? That would be with Dr. With Verbacher? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, we were just working with them. Um, they were looking into some funding, basically, so nothing that they would have to be there for.
Okay.
Just haven't heard anything back if there was any type of information or...
How long do we have until we have to have some of those funds designated? A year and a half? We're a year into it, so...
Yeah, right.
So twenty, twenty-five?
Oh, I don't know.
Soon enough.
Next year.
Yeah.
I don't know the next year.
Or...
We have to have spent by...
Done, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or allocated. Is there a difference? Would have to be spent or allocated? I think it's got to be spent.
Got to be spent by when?
Next year, right, twenty twenty-four.
That's so right.
So, um, emergency management committee is needed, but it's James, Tyler, Sarah, I'm the alternate. Do you want to send out something and try to get a date when we can start some discussion? Is open to that?
Yep.
That's good. All right. Any, okay, setting of the next Village Board meeting. So with the holiday being on Tuesday, July fourth, uh, and seven eleven is a concert day, the next Tuesday. Um, what's your pleasure? Would you want to go July?
Second Wednesday?
Six, July tenth.
Second Wednesday.
The second Wednesday, so it'll be the eleventh, right?
Twelve.
Twelve. Oh, yeah, Wednesday, sorry. Yeah. Wednesday. Um, that was one of the dates, uh...
July twelfth?
July twelfth. Wednesday, July twelfth. Is everybody agreeable to that? Does that work for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Six PM? All right. That. And with that...
What, hold on, what time is that plan commission? It's six nineteen, but what time?
Six PM. Six PM. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Plan commission is six nineteen, six PM. Next Village Board meeting will be Wednesday, July twelfth at six PM. Okay? With that, I would entertain...
Don't move.
All right, there we go. And congratulations, Tom Tom's LLC. Best of luck, best wishes.
We should probably send these back in because there is, uh, five...